I'd like to call this meeting of the Northwest Local School District Board of Education to order. Amy, if you would call the roll, please.
Mr. Detschel?
Here.
Mrs. Detschel?
Here.
Mr. Harlow?
Here.
Mr. Heether?
Here.
Mr. Ungar?
Here. If you would join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our next item is approval of minutes. Dr. Jackson?
The first set of minutes are from January 20th, 2015. The Treasurer and Superintendent recommend the Board of Education approve the minutes as listed.
Some move.
Second. The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Amy, please call a vote. Motion carries five to zero. The next item is approval of February 9th minutes.
Yes, the Treasurer and Superintendent recommend the Board of Education approve the minutes as listed.
Some move.
Second. The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Amy, please call a vote. February 9th minutes are approved, five to zero. Our next item is legislative update by Mr. Harlow.
Okay, got quite a few items to go through today. The Senate Education Committee in Columbus has heard testimony on Senate Bill Three, which would exempt high-performing school districts from certain laws, revise the law regarding state primary and secondary education assessments, permit school districts to contract with hospitals, healthcare professionals, and educational service centers for school health services, would also revise the competitive bidding threshold for school building and repair projects from $25,000 to $50,000, and it would require the School Facilities Commission to develop a legislative proposal assisting high-performing school districts in purchasing technology, building expansion, and physical alterations to improve safety and security. So that was one that they heard, and they also took testimony on House Bill Seven, which passed the House overwhelmingly, 96 to nothing. That's the hold harmless provision for students taking the new standardized test this month and will prevent test scores this year from being considered for promotion and student class grade being calculated. So that's two items that the Senate took up, and the House Education Committee is considering two bills that I think may interest us. One is about school fundraisers, and it will, it requires the State Board of Education in accordance with federal guidelines to adopt rules regarding sales of beverages and food during the regular school day, but it also allows, allows the sale of food and beverages connected with a school-sponsored fundraiser that would be exempt from the rule as long as the fundraiser takes place during the regular school day and happens no more than 30 days in an academic year. So I guess that means periodically, an organization such as our show cards, or our band, or anybody that wants to raise some money can sell snacks that aren't the federal government-approved snacks, so we can maybe, you know, maybe sell some snacks that kids actually want to eat. And, yeah, exactly, exactly. And so that's one, and that's one bill that they're hearing testimony on, still in the early stages. A lot of times, bills like this end up getting folded into the budget, so we'll keep an eye on that. And then they're also continuing to hear testimony on House Bill Two, which would further regulate the management of what the state calls community schools, but we generally refer to as charter schools. And also, they don't usually hear bills that interest education, but the House Health and Aging Committee is having hearings on inhaler use that would permit schools and camps to procure and use a metered dose inhaler or dry powdered inhaler used to alleviate asthma with students in accordance with prescribed policies and to exempt them from licensing requirements, so it may be easier to administer asthma inhalers and things of that nature. And then the House Finance Subcommittee on Primary and Secondary Education is continuing to hear testimony on the proposed funding formula, which, the way it stands right now, districts such as Northwest will come out pretty well, but, you know, I suspect that provisions will be added and subtracted that will kind of even things out for everybody. So we'll keep you posted.
Thank you, Mr. Harlow. Our next item is Student Achievement Liaison Report.
I'd like to introduce Leslie Silbernagle, our Science Instructional Specialist, and I believe we have some students from Northwest High School.
Good evening. We are here today to present to you on Gizmos. Gizmos are interactive online simulations for both math and science, and last year, the district applied to be part of the e-Textbook Pilot Project, and as a part of that project, the state is paying for us to have access to the Gizmos for all of our students in grades six through 10, both in math and science, and also our teachers have access as well. So what I personally like about the Gizmos is how engaged the kids are when they use them. My last couple of years in the classroom, I did some free trials and used the Gizmos, and the kids always got really excited, as I'm sure they'll tell you. Another thing I like about the Gizmos is the fact that I feel like they're one of the best tools to help prepare our students for the new state assessments. The new science assessments have lots of lab simulations where kids actually have to perform experiments testing different variables, and so these really help to prepare them for those types of assessments. And so now I'm gonna, oh, one more thing that I wanted to say. I like that the Gizmos allow us to do experiments that we might not otherwise be able to do, whether it's an ecology experiment where you have an ecosystem and you get to introduce a new species or take away a species and kind of see what happens to the community over time very quickly, rather than, that's something we couldn't really do. There are some labs that the kids can do that maybe we don't have the equipment for, but they can do online, and then we don't have to purchase those expensive machines that some of these experiments take. And lastly, you can do some experiments, maybe that let the kids do more inquiry, so they're getting to mix chemicals that aren't really safe to mix, but because they're doing it virtually online, there's no danger, so they're getting to do inquiry in a safe way. So I'm gonna turn it over to Amanda Robinson. She is a physical science teacher at Northwest. She's also our Assistant Athletic Director. She's been here at Northwest for three years and teaching for 10. So I'm gonna get the Gizmos going and let her introduce her students.
All right. We utilize these quite often in our blended environment, so all of these students are actually in my blended classes. So I'd like to introduce Ian. He's gonna be working the computer today, so he's gonna stand right here utilizing the mouse once we have everything up and working. I have Rachel Bandy. She's going to make sure that each of you gets a worksheet along with Ernestine Lee and Rhea Arrington. So they're gonna come stand behind each of the four members and make sure each of you guys have a worksheet so you can kind of work through this. We did this Gizmo a few weeks ago with one of our essential understandings, one of our learning targets that requires that students are able to look at solubility curves. They have to be able to interpret solubility curves, rather than just give them one and say, hey, let's read this, let's be able to answer questions about it. They're actually able to collect data on their own and then create a solubility curve and then answer questions about it. So we're just gonna kind of move through this quickly, but you can see that it gives them a question right off to start. How does temperature of the solvent affect solubility? They're able to make a prediction, so if you want to make a quick prediction, how do you expect temperature to affect solubility, you can. And then we're going to gather data. So you can see up here on the screen what they're able to do. Ian, if you want to go ahead and set our temperature, we're gonna start with 10 degrees, and we're using potassium nitrate. And then, you've got that selected, go ahead and click okay. And then also, let's show the bar chart. So you can see in this bar chart that they have visible for us, we can see how much has been added versus how much is just sitting at the bottom. So Ian, however much you want to add to start, so you can see it's being poured in, he keeps adding, he keeps adding, and now all of a sudden, we have some at the bottom. So Ian, I did not bring a calculator for you, but roughly, how much is sitting at the bottom?
Four point four percent.
All right, so how much has dissolved?
That's 21.
About 21. So if you guys could make sure that your partners are writing down the right answer on their sheet.
I need a pen.
All right. Oh, they don't have writing utensils, they're all digital.
No, I always have a pen.
Yes, so we should be writing down 21 grams. And then, Ian, if you want to reset us, and now we're going to look at a different temperature. We're gonna look at 20 degrees Celsius, and we're gonna work through this same process again. So Ian's going to go ahead and keep adding solute. All right, so Ian has recognized that we have some left over, so we can do the math, 35 minus the 4.35, about 31, it's a good estimate. So we would write that down, we'd reset, and Ian, we can go ahead and do one more.
So is that how much is on the bottom then?
The 20.
But is that how much is on the bottom of the beaker then?
Yeah. No, that's how much you put.
So there's four, there's four grams on the bottom of it.
All right, so 30, all right. Okay, go ahead and just do the subtraction there, remember?
About 45.
About 45 grams. So they would do this for each of the different temperatures. One of the things that I really like about the Gizmos is if they mess up, you click reset, and you can do it all over again in a matter of seconds, versus we did a similar lab with sugar and salt, where they were just kind of adding spoonfuls, no precise measurement, and we had to do it over several times. But with this, you can just click reset, and you can collect some more data. So with your data, you would then create a solubility curve, which I see some of you have started, maybe your partners have helped you. And then from that, they would then be able to answer questions. So before we leave you guys, we're not gonna make you guys do this for homework or anything. I just wanted to give them the opportunity. We'll start down here with Ian, and then we'll work our way across to see if they have anything that they want to share about Gizmos.
The one thing that I like most about the Gizmos is how it's all based online, and how when you can actually, when you do the work, you can actually experiment with it. So instead of just listening to it during class, you can actually do it hands-on.
My thing about the Gizmos is like, down here, like, it's like a little assessment thing.
You wanna scroll down and show them the assessments, so they can take assessments afterwards?
So like, if you don't know three, or you're not too sure about two, you could go back up to the Gizmo to check the thing out, like, by yourself, and if you're close to it, like your estimate on any one, you get to choose the closest answer that you get, even though it might not be right.
I like the Gizmos because I'm a visual learner, and like, it helps me more, it helps me learn faster because like, it's easier than when somebody's like, talking to me, trying to get me. I learn faster this way.
I like the Gizmos because, well, it's a visual, and you can do it right now, you don't have to ask your teachers for help, because it's a little bit of an extra offer, and it is visual, it's a way of learning something. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Scott. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. I'm sure I have a follow-up question or two after the meeting. Next item is our Butler Tech update. Mr. Detschel?
Yeah, Dan, just a couple of things. The Bioscience Building is completely enclosed, so they're starting the work on the inside, and if any of you would like a tour, just give me a call and can arrange it, we can go up there and check it out. It's coming along very well. And there's also a, Butler Tech deals with West Chester Hospital, and they have a lot of kids that are doing internships there, and they also are offering a tour of the hospital for any board members that want to go up there. It's in March. I'll get the date and the time if any of you are interested. And then the last thing that we did was, we had a demonstration by seventh graders from Middletown Middle School in Edgewood on the STEM program, and they just, unbelievable what they're doing with the design and modeling classes, and then their automation and robotics, making robots and doing tasks and that, and it's very, very cool. And just, Andrew, are we thinking about maybe doing that in our seventh and eighth grades, starting the STEM program?
We are.
Is that something?
Not for next year. We're looking at expanding program, that'll be for the following year.
Gotcha.
In this upcoming year, we're looking at adding the computer application classes to the seventh and eighth grade curriculum, which I think is finished, but there's still some additional work we have to do to get ready for the STEM.
Yeah, it's very impressive, their demonstrations and what they're doing at the seventh grade level with the STEM. And that's it, Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Detschel. Move on to our next item, report from employee organizations. Is there anyone here from the Certified Licensed Employee Group that would like to speak? Seeing no one. The Classified Employee Group, is there anyone here that would like to speak? Seeing no one. Report from school-related organizations. Is there a representative here from a school-related organization that would like to speak? Seeing no one. Community comments. I have two yellow cards that have been filled out, and I'll go ahead and call on Rich McFay, who has some questions for the board.
Thank you, Dan. Lights on?
We're ready.
Ready. I want to congratulate whoever took the leadership and energy to clean the walks and follow the driveways. You probably know I'm older than a lot of you, but I grew up in an area of the world where businesses and residents, when it snowed, got out and shoveled their walks into other places. If you're walking up and down Colrain Avenue today, you know, around a lot of other places in town, you know where people have kind of lost that commitment to take care of their communities, so it was a pleasure to walk in there. I don't know if it's your people that did it, but great.
Maintenance incident.
Maintenance, thank you. And it's been a while since I've been here, and the last time I was here, I talked about our state report card results, and since that's been about six months. I wonder if we have any data around how we're doing. Mr. Ungar, do we have any data around how our students are doing this year?
I will defer that question to our superintendent.
The data we currently collect is regarding classroom assessments. We use MAP data from Northwest Education Association out of Seattle, Washington. It's the measure of academic progress, and we also have common assessments we use for our teacher-based teams. Regarding the state report card, what's gonna be difficult to assess what it means for that is it's a brand-new test that we've never seen before, and we've never seen results for it before. So both the park and the air test, which are the social studies, science, math, and language arts, those results won't be available until November of 2015, is what they're predicting.
So how are we doing? And how do we know how we're doing?
Well, we have a couple of different ways we assess that. One is through teacher evaluations, and we have two specific elements that we believe will have the biggest impact on student learning. That is using learning goals and scales in our classrooms and tracking student progress. We have a couple of goals regarding that in terms of where teachers are on their scales that they're rated on. We want all teachers at, by December of last year, we wanted all teachers at at least beginning, and by the end of this year, we need all teachers at developing. So we have that data, and we also have the assessment data where we rate the students on learning goals and scales as well, and we have that data that we collect and review.
So how are we doing? Do we set some goals around how well we wanted to do?
Yes, we have, we have many goals. We actually have a document called the Comprehensive Continuous Improvement that gets approved by the board each year, and there's three goals. One of them is academic and has specific goals that we're trying to reach regarding the report card, but it has specific strategies that we're using as well and action items towards that goal. The biggest piece of that is the teacher evaluation, the way we teach our students. We're rounding their learning goals and scales, and we're doing very well, considering that the last year and a half, we've asked 550 teachers to change the way they teach, which isn't an easy process, and we're very pleased with that, and we're moving along nicely with it.
So all have been evaluated?
Not all teachers have been evaluated yet for this year. That will happen by the end of the year. Not all teachers have to be evaluated with the new, but they will all be observed at least once.
So what percent of our teachers need to be evaluated? I know some are excused for a couple of years.
Yeah, gosh, it's around 60% or so that have to be evaluated this year. All of them have to be observed, but only about 60% have to be evaluated.
So are we tracking those kind of things?
Oh, yes.
So you have, you know, we're supposed to be at 70% done, and we are 70% done. Reason I ask that, you know, some people will ask me, Rich, what are you trying to do? And I'll say, well, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm, I wanna lose weight, and I'm, you know, I'm eating better, and I'm exercising, and, you know, oh, Rich, how do you know you're gonna be there? And I, I, I wanna get into those size 38 pants, you know, that I'm not in right now. I'm getting close. One of the things about, what I'm talking about is, we do have goals for achievement. That's what, because the reason I say that is that, when I looked at the data from the last year, and you were well aware of this, as we compare our results with others in the state, we're at the bottom generally, except for a couple of exceptions where we're in the top third, but we're generally in the bottom 10 or 20% of results compared to other people in the state. And I think we need to set some aggressive goals if we're gonna try to move up, so we do have goals. I mean, has the board set goals around what we're supposed to do academically? Where are we supposed to be?
We have, as you recall from late last year, we evaluate superintendent, and in his evaluation, we noted a lot of good things, we noted a few areas for improvement, but generally, it's my opinion as one board member that Dr. Jackson's doing a good job. He's, he's, he is in the process of evaluating teachers, he's in the process of changing the way we hire employees, and a lot of these, you know, he's been the superintendent for coming up on two years at the end of April, I guess, and I'm pleased with the rate that he's making changes. Obviously, there's room for improvement for any of us, as can be seen by the various state or other evaluations that we get, but...
I'm just poking at you guys a little bit, excuse me.
Well, sure, that's fine.
The board in general, I'm setting some measurable objectives. Not I wanna lose weight, I wanna get into size 38. So, you know, do you have some like, objectives that says, you know, we'd like to move, and I'm not trying to tell you what target, but to go from the bottom 20% to the top 50%, that's the kind of thing I'm talking about, because I think that's the kind of thing we need in the school system, because everybody else is improving as well. They're not out there just sitting doing nothing. They're, and I don't think that, you know, the Colrain Cards, if they were two and 10 three years in a row, people could be jumping up and down, okay? And I'm kind of jumping up and down, that we're at the bottom 20%, and I want, I'd like to see the board jump up and down, because there are kids and families whose livelihoods in the long term are at stake here.
Sure.
That's what my passion is about, and I go to bed tonight worried about the fact that we're in the bottom 20%. So let me just ask, and I'd like to see you go higher, and I'd like to see you guys set some goals. Another thing I hear is that part of our issue is that we have a higher percentage of economically disadvantaged students in the district. You did see, I think, it probably took some pleasure out of the fact that over at Mount Halsey, their football team all got high honors, and there is a group of students who are as equally economically disadvantaged as people in this school system. So they've got something going on over at Mount Halsey, okay, where they're taking economically disadvantaged kids, and they're getting honors. They're getting honors, okay? So my question to you is, do you have a strategy? Do we have a strategy that's getting at our economically, kids who don't have, you know, the right kind of starting line? Example of that would be, what percent of our population now is African-American? 25%?
Yeah, around there, it's 28.
What percent of African-American teachers do we have? What's the number?
It's in the single digits, it's probably less than 5%.
How many teachers did we hire last year?
I don't know offhand.
20?
It's probably more than that.
30?
40, maybe.
40. How many African-Americans?
How many apply?
That's your issue, because you can go get them. I've done this, you can go get them. So how many African-Americans?
I don't know.
See, that's kind of what I'm saying around, and not just pointing at that, but you have a strategy around going at, doing the right thing to lift these people up. And I'm just saying, do you have one? Because I haven't seen it. Another thing I heard you say...
Well, I think, I think Andrew's strategy is always to hire the best person, regardless of what they look like.
The thing is, if you have a strategy, it's written down, there are action steps, there are people accountable to make things happen.
Well, he does have that written down to a degree.
But now I'd like to see.
He's changing the way that, he's talked to me recently about changing the method that we use to hire teachers and establishing a committee to prescreen them before they ever get to...
That's the kind of thing I'm talking about.
You know, one area where we, where we really came together as a district and worked in a very, very focused, very, very targeted environment that I think is kind of what aligns what you're talking about is around the third-grade reading guarantee. There's a little bit of inconsistency from the state in terms of what a passing score would be, that was finally settled, and we worked until we got every student past that. And, so I think that's, I think we're setting a good base for what's coming up by doing that. I know as far as our test scores go, at the, you know, at the state level, there's been so much change and so much, so much difficulty in terms of like, what even means it?
Everybody's dealing with that. Everybody's dealing with that.
Right.
So that excuse doesn't hold. Everybody's dealing with the same state standards.
Well, actually, it does, because, you're right. Well, actually, actually, that excuse does hold, because we're going, we're being compared one way to being compared another, and I don't think very many schools have a way of saying this is where we want to be, when they don't even know what the test looks like.
I'm just worried about Northwest.
I know.
Okay, and I'd like to hear you guys...
Well, no, you're not, because you said, you said that every school's dealing with this, and I'm telling you how every school's dealing with it.
But they're all dealing with the state. What I'm trying to say, you're dealing with changing standards.
We're dealing with moving targets, everybody is.
Everybody's doing that, and so it's tough. I'm not trying to say it's easy, okay? Not trying to say it's easy. I'm trying to say, what's the strategy? Where is the passion to take us from the bottom 20%, okay, to the top in the middle, or to the top 20%? The passion would be around, I don't like it here. I don't like it here. This is not the place where we want Northwest School District to be. I go to sleep worrying about it, I want you to go to sleep worrying about it, and say, what do we need to do? What's the strategy? One other thing else, I don't want to tie this up. The other thing I hear you guys say is our parents are never involved. I understand that's true, but what's your strategy to get parents involved? Go out to the Ohio Department of Education, look at the SOP. I'm not trying to say everything in the state's good, because it's not. There's a lot of things in there, and ask yourself, what are we doing to get these mothers, single mothers, in the door? What's our overall strategy, rather than sitting back and saying, you know, it's tough, these parents just don't want to come. They just don't want to come. And that's what I hear from you. And I say, that's not a strategy. Strategy is, we find out what it takes to get them to come, and we work on it. So I would say, Dan, is that based on what I know, and I probably know more than most residents, but not as much as you, you don't have a strategy. If you had a strategy, you could flip it my face and say, Rich, read it.
Well, I would, I would like to state that as far as getting people involved, specifically parents, to come to school, as anybody can get this, I'm on the email list of every school, and every one of them sends out an email every couple of days, hey, here's what's going on a pleasant run. Come to this event, it's that night, you know, so people, the modern...
There's some communication going on. I'm not trying to...
There is communication going on, and back to the other thing about, do we have a strategy? And I started to talk about, about what Andrew's doing as far as changing the way we hire personnel, you know, making a cultural change, and not that we have any good or bad people, and I'm not trying to say that, I'm just saying, his cultural change involves this committee he's putting together to review teachers before they ever get to the point. Maybe you could mention a little bit more about that, which you've told me.
Hiring the right people is very important, and I'm not trying to second-guess that.
And it's not something you can do overnight.
But the other issue is, we got a lot of people who are here already, okay?
Right.
Who are in the system already, all right, who are looking for the right kind of systems, the right kind of leadership, the right kind of support to move this school district ahead. I've changed a lot of organizations, okay, and I'm telling you that it's not the bulk of the people that's the issue, it's the people who are leading that's the issue, okay? The problem with change starts with the people in this room. I know it, the people who are out in the audience know it, the people in the trenches know it. You hired good people, you know? When they came in the door, you said, I like that person. Something happened over time if they're not performing. The thing that's happened over time is the culture's changed. Now, I understand, he's trying to change the culture, but you have to say, I don't like it here. I don't like the fact that I'm 20%, 80% of the people are better than me. Another one, then I'll get out of here, one thing I was gonna say. Our teachers...
Rich, if I could just touch one thing real quick.
Todd, Todd. No, I came from a building perspective and now I work at Central office.
Right.
I think there's a lot of good things that go on with Michael, Daryl, Jenny, Tracy, and myself, where we go out to buildings and Andrew has required us to meet with principals. At that time, we sit down with the principals, we look at their data on an individual basis, we look at what's going on in the classrooms, we report back to Dr. Jackson. He then goes out and he goes in room by room and checks what's going on with learning goals and what's going on with the rest of the folks. And it's at every AO cabinet meeting we have, we live, eat, sleep, and drink our scores, and we live, eat, drink, and sleep, our changes that we're making with our staff. So it's not a place for us to tell you what all's going on, because there's a lot of people who are spending a lot of hours in the AO administrative, doing our job of sitting down with our principals, coaching them, trying to offer them advice, and then in turn you get to the big picture, which is that administrator and their assistants working with our teachers who have their hands on every day. So if you're worried about, are we doing and putting the effort, are we worried as much as you are? Oh, yeah, we are.
I'm worried about how you're measuring it, and you're not sharing your progress versus your goals. And until you start showing me your goals and progress versus it, it sounds like words, Scott, okay? Now, I understand people may be working hard, okay? I want to lose weight. What's the goal, Rich? I want to get those thirty-eight pants. If I'm not there, I'll say one other thing. So, you know, one thing is, work is one thing, but where you're going to be and how close I am to that, and the person who is not doing their part, what are we doing to that person? Person who's overachieving, are we moving that person ahead? There's a lot of things that can be dealt with. A small thing, but I think is a big thing. Our teacher attendance compared to everybody else in the state last year, we're in the bottom eight percent. Ninety-two percent of the school systems have better teacher attendance than we do.
I don't, I don't know that stat.
Well, if you had it before, you didn't look at it, but that's available, okay? That's available. Now, what's, are they more sick?
Comparative.
All right?
It's hard to find.
Or is there something, they don't want to come to work? I don't know what it is. When I was working, okay, and the people that worked for me, if you, if you were out more than one or two percent of the time, we were talking with you. We were talking with you about, you don't like it here? What's the trouble? You got medical problems? I'm just saying that there's something going on when we're in the bottom ten percent from an attendance standpoint. Now, maybe it's better this year. Is anybody tracking it? Who's tracking it?
I imagine it is tracked, it's not something...
Nobody in this leadership team knows anything.
Well, we don't have it readily available right here.
But you would know.
I'm sure Tracy could come up with an answer on that.
See, I, I understand some person is tracking that number. Some person. These people, the people who make and break people in this organization, you people, I'm saying, do you know what's going on? Are we making progress? I just asked you. And quite frankly, I think on the score, you know, if you get an F, maybe you get a C, because you don't know.
I don't have that information right here in front of me, I couldn't have that.
We just met with our teachers about two months ago to discuss that, and I don't have the number in front of me currently, but it doesn't mean I don't know it and don't track it. So you're coming to a public meeting without any advance notice, which is fine, it's a public meeting, asking a bunch of questions, but to assume that someone doesn't know one specific fact, doesn't, doesn't mean it's not being tracked or not being paid attention to. We've actually had an issue this year with substitute coverage, and we've been discussing with our teachers, and so we are aware of it. But because I can't give you a percentage right now, doesn't mean we're not aware of it.
Okay, I, I'll accept that. The question is, where's your passion?
Rich?
Where's your passion? See, that's what's listening. That's like saying, I don't like it.
Rich, let me, let me...
Chris, and after your comments, we're going to...
There's no passion, there's no passion, and the kids, okay, who are going to this school, who are in the middle, are the people who are getting lost. It's their families in the future, it's their jobs, but that's it. It's not the high-performing kids. The high-performing kids are going to make it in any school system. It's a bunch of kids in the middle that are getting lost.
Well, you've given us a lot to think about, so thank you, Rich.
Dan, I, I did want to, if I haven't said a word all night, I, I wanted to get my comments in. Rich, I know you're hard to find the right place, and I know your intentions are honorable, nobody doubts that, but as I mentioned to you in an email, public education and proctor and gamble are two totally different entities. Let me throw out something, I know a little bit something about, the medical field. With all the affirmative action programs that people were throwing their hands up, putting, you know, people who aren't qualified into medical school and moving people up, denying other people the opportunity who should be there, do you know how many, the percent of black men that are physicians in this country? It's five percent. The black population's twelve, thirteen percent. So with all the affirmative action, it's still only five percent of the men, uh, men are physicians. Now, the question is why? They're not applying. Even with affirmative action, they're not applying. So when you say, how come we don't have so many teachers with forty new hires, how come a certain percentage aren't this or that? You've got to have, as Pam started to say, the folks who want to do it.
Talk to Dexter Christian, he says, he told, he told, no, superintendent. This is kind of crude, he says, you don't stick your hand in a white field of paint and expect to come out with blacks. You have got to go to black schools if you want to get black hair. So if I only one thing I want to say, Chris, this state that running a school is not like running the business system, it's BS, and it reveals your lack of knowledge around what does it take to turn an organization around. Have you ever turned an organization around? None of you have.
That is not true.
Well, we're going to go on to the next speaker, because I, I need to be fair to this other person who's filled out a card, and there's a point at the end of the meeting where we can talk about things that were talked about during the meeting. So let's move on to Paul Frankenfeld, who is a resident who wanted to talk about the retention of bus drivers.
Thank you very much, President Unger and esteemed board members. I am Paul Frankenfeld, I'm a resident of Greentown Ship, and both my children used the Northwest School District buses when they were attending St. James School, because it was supplied, of course, by the district. I am also a member of the Cincinnati Labor Council and was encouraged to come to the meeting on February the ninth. Unfortunately, I was in California that night. And I think it's very, very important and hope that you will strongly consider keeping those wonderful and dedicated individuals who've been bus drivers. I hope this isn't a day late and a dollar short.
It's a day late.
All right. I was encouraged to come to this meeting as well, so anyway, I, uh...
What we, what we ended up doing was we had a request for proposals, and part of that was that the bus companies would give us an opportunity to continue to own the equipment, so that if we decided a few years down the road to change course, we wouldn't have to go out and buy all new buses, and none of the respondents came back with a proposal where the board would continue to own the buses. And based on some other factors Dr. Jackson and his team came up with, that we would stay with what we're doing now. But I, I think it's critical that every cost that we have out there is evaluated, and I, I felt like the transportation got a pretty good looking at as far as what it costs versus what it might cost versus the long term. If we changed course, would we be able to still economically provide buses? I don't know if you have any comments, Andrew, or not, or...
No, that's, that's exactly what we did. So we are going to retain our current employees and our...
I'm pleased to hear that, I really appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to you.
Oh, well, thanks, thanks for, thanks for asking, I'm sorry you missed it.
I walked in because I didn't see any of the other people, so there's a...
Yeah, it was our last meeting, it was packed up.
Okay, well, thank, thank you very much, Paul. We'll then move on, and once again, there's a point at the end of the meeting where any questions about any of this, there's another opportunity to speak. I'm not advancing, let's see here, there we are. Our next item is a fiscal item, Dr. Jackson.
Just one second, I need to get, I need to get the right location here.
Are we at eleven, one?
Yes.
I haven't even touched, but...
Just go to the next item.
Click down at the bottom there, thank you, Jer.
Oh, yeah. I got it, I'm, I'm there now.
Okay. Okay, yes, there we go. So we have several financial reports. Amy, do you have anything to explain to the board on these?
No, I just added the check register for the month of January, in addition to the monthly reports that you've been receiving in the past. As we go forward, each month I'll try to continue to tweak board reports to add, give you more information.
And I saw that, and, and thank you, that's great information to have, it's publicly available information to anyone who looks at the minutes from this meeting, it should be on the, on the website. So when we're done with this meeting and we, we close the meeting, and I guess as you go back and look at this meeting, you'd be able to see all that information for the public.
Dan, would it be possible to, and, and Amy, and it was very easy to read, I congratulate you for, for making it so simple to understand, but is there any way we could, so it is more accessible for those who don't go to the electronic school board website and look at the minutes and so forth, where we could have a link on our district website? Amy, how, how difficult would that be?
Where we could like have, review January revenues and expenditures, click here, review February, you know, for maybe we go back twelve months or six months or whatever is practical. And so people could have easier access to it, because I think they're more drawn to the district website, and that's where they would find it. Is that practical? Because we're not making any progress, it seems, with, I know we're going to discuss it later, Dan, but just to throw it out, now with, it just seems like the thing with the state is not moving, it just seems like, you know, we've talked about it for six weeks, eight weeks now, and we haven't made any progress. And this might be a happy kind of medium where we can have the information out there without even worrying about the state auditor and compatible software and so forth.
Okay.
And we can talk about that during that, that's another item on the agenda this evening, as Chris has mentioned.
Okay, that, that is doable, it's just you need to remember, the more places you want things listed and updated, the more something will get missed. I mean, it's, you can just keep adding places, so we just have to think, where do we want to be able to post it? Where are people going to know where to go to look for it? I mean, that's when we keep updated with the information, just to think about.
And that, and that's on the agenda for a little bit later, so is there a...
Treasurer and superintendent recommend the Board of Education approve the financial reports as listed.
So moved.
Second. The motion's been moved and seconded, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, Amy, please call for a vote. Reports are approved, five to zero. Our next item is a certified licensed personnel item.
Yes, we have two certificated resignations, one procedural resignation, three extra duty resignations, and one procedural extra duty resignation. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the certified licensed personnel retirements and resignations as listed.
So moved.
Second. The motion's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Amy, please call a vote. Motion carries five to zero. Our next item is a classified personnel item.
We have four resignations and one procedural resignation. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the classified retirements and resignations as listed.
So moved.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? I would just like to mention that as these people are leaving the district, that's, some of, as some of them are replaced, they're the ones who kind of go through your new system of replacing people. So it is a slow, sometimes pretty slow, but steady thing, so. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, Amy, please call a vote. Motion carries five to zero. Certified licensed personnel item.
Yes, we have one initial appointment, one tutor, one athletic worker, and one non-licensed coach. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the certified licensed personnel items as listed.
So moved. Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Amy, please call a vote. Motion carries five to zero. Classified personnel item.
Yes, we have one initial appointment, one classified sub, one change in status, and one leave of absence. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the classified personnel items as listed.
So moved.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Amy, please call a vote. Motion carries five to zero. An out-of-state field trip request.
Yes, we have an out-of-state field trip request for the show cars to attend the South Dearborn High School show choir competition on March seventh. So the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the out-of-state and extended field trip request as listed.
So moved.
Second. Didn't we approve this already, or was that just...
Northwest.
Yeah, that was Northwest, they're both attending this.
Is there any other discussion? I would...
No, I was just going to wish both of them, both Northwest and Colraine, show choirs good luck in the competition.
And I would just like to mention, as I do at every meeting to everyone here, that our agendas are always posted at least forty-eight hours ahead of time, if not more, and the board has already had a chance to look through this, so if it appears that we're going through this and approving it or asking questions, it's because we've already looked at it, that is available to the public, so everyone's had a chance to look at it, who's wanted to look at it. So I, Amy, please call a vote. Motion carries five to zero. And this brings us to our discussion of the availability of financial records online. Amy, did you have some other comments about how we're doing with the, the state treasurer's office?
Well, I, I asked the state treasurer's office how they were doing with the information that we sent up prior to the last board meeting, and they are still working on getting the test data formatted and the program written to accept the uniform school accounting system data that, in the format it would come in. So they don't expect anything in the immediate future, probably a few weeks out, they're keeping me posted.
So what, so the PDF that you produced for us earlier with the, all the January expenditures, it's just a problem of converting that to their system at this point?
Correct.
But I, once again, as we were saying earlier, I applaud you for getting that together for us. It's been something I've wanted to see for a long time, and then you've been here six or seven weeks and you've got it done pretty quick, so that's measurable progress, and I, I certainly appreciate it, so.
But Dan, do you think that instead of messing with relying on people up in Columbus to make sure everything's uniform, compatible, that we just bypass that and put it on our district website?
Well, I'm, I'm fine with that, but I, I would like to, I mean, some, there's got to be a school district out there, and I know there's no other districts doing it at this time, and that's probably a part of the problem with, with the state, but somebody's going to be first to do it, and if, you know, it sounds like Amy's got their attention, and, and I'm fine doing it in both places, but I would still like to pursue this thing with the state, because someone has to, I think, once they get coordinated with our software, they'll be coordinated with everyone's, I'd just as soon have them work out the bugs with us, so that if Northwest can have any influence on how it's ultimately done, I would rather be the leader than the follower. So that, that is something we've been working on, and I know Amy's put a lot of time into it, and I'm sure she's bugging them, and I'm sure they're watching when she calls and probably not answering the phone half the time. She brings a tremendous background to us with her time at the other school district and with the state auditor's office, and, and I'm confident we've got a person here who, who will get this done for us as we've discussed as a board, and I, I'm, like I said, you've got it done in six or seven weeks of being here. You've given us the whole January register, and I appreciate that. It's just, somebody's going to work it out with the state, Chris. I don't know who's going to be first, so.
We also, I appreciate everything that you've done to get us to this point, and also to have the check register available has been very good. Is it possible to, I know, for instance, you know, the purpose wasn't always there. Is that something that could somehow fit on the report, or maybe you like create a code system where you would know that one's a reimbursement and two's a something else? Because it just, you know, if one thing, one of the people we wrote a check to, we wrote a check to you, we wrote a check to Andrew, and we pay you guys also pretty well. So I just want to see, I mean, it's obvious to me that that was a reimbursement, but it may not be obvious to other people.
Those are not payroll-
Right, I know, but-
On there at all.
Right, so, I know, but I was just saying, maybe, why are we paying them extra? So, you know, it's like, you know, it's like when I say, you know, create a code or a system that says, you know, what the purpose of that check is.
I'll take a look at it and see what I can do, but you gotta remember this is 1978 software.
I think, Amy, too, when I reviewed it-
Dog space.
When you see like, you know, A.J. Smith Company paid $687, if there was just one more space where it said plumbing services or whatever, widget purchase, just a couple words, but that was my big question, too. But on the revenue, that's pretty self-explanatory. It's more the expenditures. And, you know, you see Andrew with all these, and I'm thinking, man, how many bonuses are we giving this guy?
That's not, that's not a-
Just kidding, Dan, you know that. But the, you know, just a simple explanation might, I know it's a lot of extra work in the sense of putting that in and remembering and coordinating it, but assuming that you could get a system down pat that wasn't too time-consuming, it sure, I think, would make a difference. So, see what you can do. And-
Just wait. Well, and like I said, we've given her a measurable goal as a board, and she's six or seven weeks into her job here and got it done that quick. And as we discussed, thank you. I really appreciate that. So, we'll move on to the next item, which is summer 2015 permanent improvement projects. Dr. Jackson?
We have an item for information here. I'm going to turn it over to Todd, just to remind the board, this is just a preliminary list of various projects, and that this will actually come to the board for approval in March. Todd, do you want to kind of describe some of the projects we're looking at for the summer?
Yeah, again, this is anything that was going to be over 25,000. I've worked with Rob Lesko and Dick Cradell, and we've put together a list of needs. We met with our maintenance department, the custodians of the buildings, to find out what were some of the issues that we needed to fix or replace. The one thing you'll see on Colrain High School and Northwest High School is we vowed to, to finish the auditorium project, and so you'll see lighting under each, and that will be the final stage of getting auditorium, which I did for the past two years. The tennis courts at Northwest are another big item that needed to be fixed, and you'll see it listed on there. But it's mainly doing as little as we can at the schools that will possibly be demolished and rebuilt into new schools, if we're fortunate enough for the bombing that happened in the past. And then doing the roof re-comparers on the buildings we are planning on keeping so that we can get them up to where they're safe, warm and dry in all our buildings. So that was the main goal of all of these listed.
It, it does look like there's a very minimal number of items for those schools that may potentially get demolished if we have a levy, so, so that was definitely positive. And this is money we would use from our permanent improvement fund.
Correct. And I looked through the list also, and it looks pretty reasonable, just a minimum of things, and, and did anybody have any other comments, Pam or Jim?
I'm good with it.
Okay, well, we'll look for that to come back at the next meeting then.
Yes.
Okay. Our next item is a student services item. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, Paula DeCrawley was going to present this evening, but she is ill, so she had to go home. And this is a list of various activities throughout the district for Black History Month. And I won't go through all of them, but you can see some of the various activities. Colrain High School had a door decorating contest for famous blacks in history. Northwest High School had a soul food luncheon. I actually participated in that. I wasn't able to this year, but was able to last year. Pleasant Run Middle School did a trivia day through the principal. White Oak Middle School had several activities that you can see, including watching "I Have a Dream," and also some CNN student news clips about Black History Month. Colrain Elementary learned more about the Underground Railroad. You can see, Monford Heights has something separate for each individual grade level. You can see listed there. And scrolling down towards the bottom, you can see that Wells Schoolwide had an assembly and actually brought back a retired principal from P R E, Mrs. Joan Farabee, that read stories about African-American leaders. I would encourage anyone that wants to see more information to go out to our website, to the E S B website, and they can access this item. You can see about three pages worth of activities that we completed for Black History Month.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Move on to our next item, which is community communications. If there's someone in the audience that has a question or comment about anything that was discussed this evening, please approach the microphone.
Can I get a second chance?
If you come to the microphone, and it should be something we've discussed this evening, and-
Listen, I roughed you guys up, and I just-
That's okay, Rich. We're big boys, we can take it.
Oh, you can take it, all right.
We've seen worse.
And I value what you're doing, okay? I'm trying to encourage you to do more faster, okay? So take that roughing up in the spirit that is intended, all right? Produce a better school system, all right? That's what I'm here for, and that's what you're here for, and I just would like a little bit more passion. You know, the other thing I'd say, you know how strongly I feel about finances, because you, you just know that, and you know how much I penetrate these things. And I value what the fact you're doing with treasure wells, it's going to pay out. But I ask you to think about that. Have you spent as much time thinking about what we're going to do to improve the schooling for economically disadvantaged students? Or have you spent as much time, okay, around how you're going to bring parents into the fold? I know that this is something you're working on, Dan, okay? I'm saying, you know, other things, if you compare the time you're spending on that versus the things we've talked about tonight, I'd be tempted to pause and think about that.
Okay, thank you, Rich. Is there anyone else in the audience that has any question or comment about anything we've discussed this evening? And move on to our next item, which is board items. Mr. Heater.
Nothing, Dan.
Mr. Detzel.
Just one thing, Dan. I wanted to congratulate Carrie Tepe last night. She qualified for the state in swimming. I know, we got the text about 11 o'clock last night, and had a swim off, and she won, and she's going to the state swimming meet up in Canton, Ohio.
That's fabulous. Always great to hear good news about the students. It's certainly the best part of being on the board, Jim.
Yes.
Pam, did you have any other comments?
I just want to tell Todd to please let the maintenance department know what a great job in custodial department they have done. I mean, we've got a lot of snow this past week, a lot of frigid temperatures. Looks like we could be getting some more frigid temperatures, and they have done a great job getting everything ready to finally get back to school. And Andrew, I think the families do appreciate the fact of not waiting till the last minute as far as making the call.
Very much.
Letting them know that, I mean, if we pretty much know it, we're going to be off, I think, sooner rather than later, and I think we've done a good job with that.
Mr. Harler, did you have any comments?
Yes, I have a few. First of all, I'd just like to reiterate what Mrs. Detzel said about the, about the great job that people did getting the snow cleared off, and we certainly appreciate, as I've expressed to you, the early notice when we, and my son certainly appreciates it, too, and the, the early notice for when school's called off. I'd like to also take a moment to recognize Evan Schmidt, who's in the audience.
Now, you're taking my thunder. He's here because of Boy Scouts.
Okay, well, I know, but you can, you can have the thunder.
That's his, that's his to him.
He lives across the street from me, so.
Well.
And also, as I alluded to, February 9th meeting when we discussed the bus, we discussed the transportation RFP, you know, I do put a child on the bus every day, or at least every day that we have school, and certainly would like to thank Debbie Metzger for doing a great job transporting my son these years, and hope to see her out there for many more years.
Thank you, Michael. And as I said, I never like to let a meeting go by when I, I see one of our scouts in the audience, so I'm glad you're here, Evan, and your dad, Rob, and you can, if you've ever wondered why it turned out the way I did, it's because I sit up here at these meetings, so. And with, with no other comments, we'll move on to the next item. We're going to add-
Exec session. We're going to possibly add one additional reason to exec session. I'll read that in a second, but I do want to make a few comments real quick. One is just to let everyone know, there's several updates on the website regarding rescheduling various events. So Wednesday was supposed to be an early release. We've canceled the early release for Wednesday, so students will stay in for regular dismissal on Wednesday. We also rescheduled the high school and middle school parent-teacher conferences that were canceled last week, so I encourage everyone to go out to the website for those as well. And that information will be updated on the website, and I think I've been tweeting it out and things like that as well, so hopefully everyone gets that, and it should be getting emails as well. Many of the schools do electronic, particularly the high school, middle schools, electronic signups for parent-teacher conferences. You need to get with your specific school to see if those times automatically transferred or not. I don't have that answer, and I think each school may be a little different on that, so parents will need to check with that. So with that, the board, I make a mo, or I'm sorry, I make a recommendation, the board move an exec session to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, and to conference with an attorney concerning disputes that are subject of pending or imminent court action, and to consider the purchase of property or for public purposes, or for the sale of property at competitive bidding, et cetera. So.
Second. The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Not on that, but just to piggyback, Andrew, I did get emails, I think, pretty much from, it was every school today, so I think they've done a great job communicating that the, the, now I just blanked.
Conferences and early releases.
Yeah, the early release stays been canceled.